Right, so she's broke, she's a black woman.
I'm just checking this, actually very much. So where to go? Yeah! Yeah, yeah. Again. Well, the regular meeting of the U.S. Servicewall Council of Commissioners for August 3, 2016. The order that keeps our world pop. All right, now the commission of town. It's going to be as good as it is. As they play a brother, as the kids have their mind. They can build you out of fabric. And that stuff's all about the people. There's some sayin'. I mean, you have that village dog and that rabbit with the big shoulder and that great speed. On Saturday evening, and there's a lot of good stuff on the map inspired by the current jet. And the best in the hundred percent, take us, we can get out and support that fair. And support our citizens. And that, which is an issue with the kids at their budget agency. Oh my God, and the powers, the powers, it's right. Right, which is, and that, and that. And that one. And we're not excited. I still haven't taken that one. Sixty-one, give me. It's possible. Forty-nine, it's like, please. Thank you. I love the way this is so good. Now the United States of America. This ends, no nation. And the end of this world will ever be in this. Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming this evening to watch Sidics in Action. At this point, I would open the mic for any public comment on what is the line this evening's agenda. This is the point in the meeting where we take public comments from folks on things that are on our agenda this evening. All right, we're down here on District 62-77. I have this, and without the eight-year-old pursuit of the probably one of the people I have talked to, this request that this council, local, and authorized a community council to conduct these discussions as stipulated in the U.S. Servicewall Charter. A team for the public comment.
Chief Executive Vincent, Madam Chair Womack Sinisha, members of the Council Commissioners, my name is Perifurco. Got the address, 15 South Waring Street, in Bute, Montana. I'm here once again to talk about the relocation of the county shops, I remember 16-377. I'm here once again to talk about the relocation of the county shops, item number 16-377. Their experience of diminished quality of life and immediate plummeting of their property values. This is collateral damage with no benefit. And this is going to be decided by you. I would, as whether or not it's acceptable. It's pretty bleak, I know, you know. And so I want to take a little bit and talk about collateral benefit. Our BLDC director, Pam Haxby-Cover, made a statement last week that really hit the nail on the head for me. She said, and I'm paraphrasing here, that it's more important to keep a business than attract a new business. And more importantly, it's difficult to attract new business. It's fairly relatively easy to maintain an existing business. Should you choose a Mansfield Center as a new location for the shops, the city will realize a huge collateral benefit and keep an existing business which employs over thirty professionals right here in this town. One business that's been here for thirty-five years and has pumped millions of dollars in this community in the past. I'm currently a contracts manager at MSE and also involved in business development. And I can tell you that we have ongoing contracts. We're an ongoing concern. The one thing that prevents us from growing our company exponentially is the burden of the facility we no longer require. Our business line does not require such a large facility for our operations. They retain jobs and future growth, will pump more money into our local community, and support existing railroad businesses like they have in the past, like we have in the past, and increase the tax base. This is the collateral benefit that I'm talking about, and it has no collateral damage. While the center of town is moving south almost daily, I live down there, I can see reconstruction happening constantly. The Mansfield Center is perfectly built, located for 21st century operations. The middle of town, we're talking 20th, 19th century operations. The Mansfield Center has all utility infrastructure that the shops will ever require. The geography is flat and is ready today for construction and/or moving, depending on how you choose, of the options that are available to you. And also, there will be no delay in movement if you choose this site. You can move tonight if you choose. You certainly have options. However, there is no other site under consideration besides the Mansfield Center that will preserve a longstanding, existing business and create an immediate spark of economic activity and growth. To read it, it was reflected on a scoreboard. There's only one scoreboard in here, it's right up there. All your names are on it, red light every night. And choosing the Mansfield Center provides direct and collateral benefit in so many ways. I encourage each of you to cast aside this must-be-a-winner, must-be-a-loser mentality and recognize that choosing the Mansfield Center is a whole community win in which there are no losers. That's all, thank you. I really appreciate you letting me get up here. I've been up here a lot lately. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Good evening. Chief Executive Vincent, Chair of Shops and Commissioners. I'm William Lurkey, I live at 2610 State Street. I'm here to talk about the Butte Silverball Shoping. I've been studying the sites being considered. The only site that makes sense to me is the Mansfield Site. There is everything required and more. All the other sites require construction of sewer, water, power, and buildings. MSE has all of this. While some of the buildings at MSE would require some conversion, it still would be a lot cheaper than starting from scratch. If it is going to cost seven to eight million dollars to build a parking garage, what would the true cost be to clean a new shop complex? If MSE Site is chosen, we won't be back here hashing this out again when one of the other sites didn't fit the bill. When our children and grandchildren don't have to worry about finding tax money to relocate the shops at a later date as Butte Silverball grows. I'd like to invite all of the Commissioners to come out and look at the MSE Site briefly for yourself to see what a great deal it is. I would also ask you to do your own homework. Don't take anybody else's opinion. Investigate this on your own so you can make an informed choice. So let's put this industrial complex at the Mansfield Center where it belongs. Also, I understand with headfirst leasing, part of the Kelly, some of the Metro City folks, they left without an office and storage space. So come on out, we'll have lots of room in MSE. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
My name is Rich Penn-Halligan, I live at 82 West Court Street. And I believe I can't ask any questions during this, right? It's just comment. But before you guys go down the parking garage, I wonder if you could give these following answers for me? And as, maybe they've already been answered, I just haven't seen them in the paper. My question would be, is there still going to be free parking on the streets when the parking garage is built? And the reason I'm asking this, I'd like to get it on the public record. I could have called and asked the city departments or whatever. But I just want to find out if that's going to cancel out free parking so that everyone will know. And the second thing is, he can bring that, but I have heard that Northwestern Energy is in doubt pertaining to these parking spaces, and maybe I'm completely mistaken about that. I heard they're supposed to be raising. Anyway, I heard there was some problem. I'm assuming that's not a problem, because I'm assuming that would affect the parking garage being built. And I'd like to know what the answer is to that. And I didn't know that the change of it, I didn't know that the shops were on the thing tonight, but since he spoke about it, I'm going to have to say something about it. If the shops, if that space is going to be saved for a private developer, for a hotel or some sort of private development living structures or something, and get some sweetheart deal, and I say, no, don't. I say, put the shops there. If it's going to be given to some private company to make money off of, then let's use it for the shops if that's the best place. But if we can keep it for public use, for the people to use, then I say, don't put the shops there and let's have a public area. But not if it's going to be given over to a private entity. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Lieutenant Randall, 3222 Harvard. I just wanted to touch base with you guys tonight on village management in the county of Butte Silverball. I'm in the private sector, really trying to innovate the government as well as academia and nonprofits. And I'm just learning and confident that in today's world, there's been very common thread for which we all can be measured, fiscal responsibility. In my opinion, you are service providers. Maybe that you do something, you don't do something in order product, but rather serve a need. And serving that need requires making prudent financial decisions. Each election cycle is the public's own performance, based on what you have done, what you're currently doing, and your plan to do. I'm simply asking you to do the exact same thing regarding a service provider for which this county is responsible in its sheer extension. And yes, we are responsible, because if we are planning, we must be playing. Please ask and understand from the MSE's past performance. Why did you go over here before November, but you have read about it regularly? And MSE's current results, are you and MSE represent happy? And MSE's future plans, are you and MSE contemplating building a fix or a long-term solution? And so, what is that long-term solution? And why didn't you hear about it before? And please, if you don't have the necessary answers, then please get the information. Be confident before you vote. I'd imagine that each one of you are facing an election that if you are proud and confident in what you have done, the questions are not a problem.
Thanks, Joe.
Cameron Moeller, 208 South Washington Street. Item number nineteen on tonight's agenda is my request to purchase a distressed property of 102 East Second Street for its rehabilitation. When I wrote this request, I thought I was the only person interested in buying the property, but as it turns out, this is not the case, and there are others who are also interested in purchasing the house. To be honest, I don't know which of us is better qualified, but I can say that while I won't be finished with my current project until October, I could certainly restore the exterior of this property, which has been pretty badly damaged by fire before the end of this building season, given that I have a couple weeks of warm weather to do so. I would do it entirely out of pocket, as I'm doing with my current project. Wouldn't ask for any money from URA or from the city. And if anybody has any questions or comments, feel free to, I'll stick around to the end of the meeting, feel free to ask me. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Moeller.
Chief Executive and Counsel, my name is Jesse LeBov, 190713. I'm on petition number sixteen dash three. I support the closure of the alley. My family has been involved with that property since quite time. And I'd like to see that closed so we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. And just for other folks in the audience, you'll have an opportunity to speak on this when we open the public hearing, so Commission members just take note that Mr. LeBov's comments are relative to the alley closure petition number sixteen dash three and should be assigned to such agenda item, so, as a proponent. Any further public comment? Casing none, we'll move into the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 20th, 2016. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting occurring July 20th, 2016.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is anything on the question? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no items not addressed on the agenda this evening. I'll make a brief chief executive report, as I already noted in Commissioner's searches. And Ralph's absence tonight is because of the fair, so again, that starts tomorrow at nine AM. The Montana Standard and the Butte Silverball website's got a pretty good rundown of all of the different activities and the times at which those are going to take place, so get out and support your county fair. Also of note, I just wanted to state that as we continue our public hearing on the budget tonight, we'll be holding a special meeting next week on Wednesday, 7:30 to close the special, to close the public hearing and adopt the budget, so take note of that. And then also, next week on, I believe it's Tuesday, we have got the 75th anniversary of the Silverball Homes Public Housing Project is going to be celebrated with an event at their gazebo on the east side of the complex at 4:00 PM. So I would extend the invite for members of the Commission and the public to join us and hear a little bit about how far the public housing is coming, seventy-five years since those structures were first built. So that concludes my chief executive report. We'll move into the public hearings and presentations, and so I'll ask Deputy County Attorney Molly Muthay if we have proof of publication on the public hearing for this evening, as we've already established that there was proper publication for the ongoing budget public hearing. County Attorney Muthay?
For the budget public hearing. Yes, for the, excuse me. Chief Executive and Counsel, there is proof of publication for the public hearing noticed for Wednesday, August 3rd regarding the alley closure out in Rocker Townsite, and it was published twice, and the publication appears to be in order.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, we have petition number sixteen dash three. Michael Nation, our building official, requesting counsel authorize a petition to close and vacate that portion of the eight-foot alley adjacent to the west, twenty feet of Lot Three, all of lots four through seven, Lot Three of the Rocker Townsite on the Webster Road and Track K of the Spear in Bauer Placer, number fourteen forty-five, Section 21, Township Three, North Range Eight West. Mr. Nation?
Good evening. My name is Michael Nation, I'm the building official for Butte Silverball. I've received two comments about this closure. One was from a property owner in the area, but the alley they were concerned about was not this one, it was actually down the road a little ways. And the other comment was anonymous comment, the person that we're really concerned was that if this alley is closed, it could affect future trash removal or something if they were to use that alley. It's my understanding that this alley has always been part of this yard, and it's never been used as an alley. Those are the only comments that I have.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Nation from the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. So first call for proponents, those in favor of the alley closure. Please state your name and address, sir.
Yeah, my name is Richard Peterson, and I live at 1106 Cleveland Lane in Rocker. I want to thank you for your time tonight. And I live in Rocker with my wife, Bonnie Peterson. And we've been working with Butte Silverball Planning Division to resolve an encroachment issue in regard to our property. We have personally worked with Pioneer Engineering regarding the survey of our property. The survey map from Pioneer shows an eight-foot wide alley through the middle of our property. We previously had no knowledge of any such alley, and so now we have asked for an alley closure to find our property limits, because this alley does not physically exist, there's no utilities or anything public that would be involved. It's only shown on the survey map. And it's only eight feet wide, that part is, the yard is fenced. It affects no other people, just our own property. So again, I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rich.
I, for example, just about 1907 Forton Avenue, I support the closure of the alley. Thank you.
Very good. Further proponents? How about opponents? Are there any opponents to the closure of the alley? Final call for opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Communication number sixteen dash three zero five. Public hearing opened last week. Danette Gleason, Director of the Finance and Budget Department, requesting counsel authorize a public hearing on the final budget to begin July 27th and to be continued upon adoption of the fiscal year '17 final budget. Ms. Gleason? Ms. Gleason?
Chief Executive Vincent, Council Commissioners for the record. I'm Danette Gleason, the Finance and Budget Director for Butte Silver Bow. We're back here again tonight. There's some more information to share with you. Dory and Karen Hassler are passing that out to you tonight. We did receive certified values on Monday from the Department of Revenue, and so we're going to show you some of those and that information tonight. But to start, there's another summary of amendments. Like we always have addressed, each time, we have several grant funds in Butte Silver Bow. And in order to make sure that we have the correct budget authority, some of the claims have been being processed up through June 30th. And a lot of these grants carry over into September 30th. So we don't want to have too much budget on the table, so we make some adjustments to make sure that we're not leaving that authority out there and have an error on the grants. So to start off with, on the long summary amendment sheet that Karen's passing out, the first amendment on that relates to new law enforcement. It's the DLI grant, the Traffic Safety Grant, the 24/7 program. Then there's also some changes in the canteen fund. We have to wait till year-end. As you recall, we start this budget process in February, and they're trying to give us our best estimates, but a lot of these, especially items like the canteen count, carry over to the next fiscal year and to a process of everything. We don't know exactly what numbers and where they're at. And so these adjustments to the canteen, as well as DLI court, the ARSTAT grant, which follow, are all related to those type of expenditures and adjustments. We've changed a capital lease on equipment that was in the Superfund sites. It was originally set up as just a lease payment, but it's been determined that it's actually a capital lease. And for accounting purposes, we've had to transfer the funds around. There's a little budget impact. It's just basically carrying for accounting property for that piece of equipment. The next group of transactions relate to the URA and RRA getting certified values. And Monday, we're making our adjustments based upon the certified values that they had received. Finally, at the bottom, we have some adjustments related to the 18 mills that are assessed in the TIPIT, not assessed based on the contract, but the TIPIT has the fire equipment grant. The TIPIT value came in somewhat reduced, so we had to make that adjustment for that transfer based on that 18-mill contract. And then lastly, is just adding the items that you will be discussing later tonight as it relates to the parking structure, putting the debt service payments on the books, as well as the capital account related to the project. The next page is the resource requirement schedule. It's the first time you've seen it this year, because we did only receive certified values on Monday. You'll see that the countywide value mill is 58,969, which compares to the $60,156 from last year on the countywide side. We also see that we are levying the same number of mills, a 387.87 mills, which is the same number of mills levied last year. So holding taxes neutral with no increases, with the exception of noted the mills for the aquatic facility. That debt service that was added during the preliminary budget process was 8.59 mills. So the total mills is 396.46. The total appropriations in the tax code funds is $45,043 through 74, compared to $46,721.28 last year, for a difference of about $1.2 million less than last year. This resource requirement schedule maintains reserve levels at 16%, which has always been a goal of this commission, which chief executive and the Finance and Budget Department. I think that we have a well-established balanced budget, and I think we're ready to move forward with the final adoption of the budget. I've also handed out tonight just a more valued 10-year graph trend that I like to show, the trend of our value. You can see back in 2008, the value of a mill was $49,416, compared to today at $58,969. So values are increasing, even though we're down from last fiscal year. Finally, if you look at the comparison, Commissioner Shaw had requested this comparison on the tax values on different values of homes. So you'll see the $75,000 home, $100,000 home, and $200,000 home. Exclusive of the aquatics facility bonding, we are seeing neutral, like I mentioned before. So the local government taxes on a $75,000 house would be $393. On a $100,000 house is $524. And on a $200,000 home is $1,047. When you add the voter-approved levies to the debt service payment of $505,000, the cost on a $75,000 house is $8.70. On a $100,000 home is $11.60. On a $200,000 home is $23.19. These increases just slightly less than what we had discussed in our presentations throughout the whole discussion related to debt service payments on the bonds. I think less than 20 cents, but around 20 cents less than what we had anticipated. Finally, just again, want to iterate that we have, I've balanced the resource requirement schedule. I've done the computation related to 15, 10, 4, 20, the number of mills that we can levy. This year, we're leaving another about 45, 46 mills on the table. We've been doing some adjustments as we make further adjustments to the budget. I anticipate that being slightly higher, again, maybe up to 49 mills that are on the table that are left afloat. Again, those are exclusives of any debt service payments. We've always been in a habit, maybe to our own fault, of rolling in debt service payments that are voter-approved within, and then saying that we're not raising taxes. We should actually be looking at our operating mills separate from our debt service mills and then determining where taxes are really going with that, because those mills are voter-approved. And we always roll them in, and then we put the pressure on ourselves each time when we're doing that, when we're calculating taxes. So that's why I took the option on the resource requirement schedule, and I backed out the number of mills just related to the aquatics. I didn't back out all the other debt service, just to demonstrate, demonstrate how that mill works.
Very good, Danette. Thanks for your work and effort on this. Any questions for Danette? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Danette, on the ladder truck for the fire department, how many more years left of that debt service do we have?
We have two taxing years, not two complete fiscal years of payments, but 18 months.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Commissioner Prudential, followed by Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Danette, for all of your hard work and all of these numbers. It's, oh, I think, yeoman's work. I have a question. And I don't know if you have the answer off the top of your head, but you probably do. How much debt service does Butte Silver Bow currently have with regard to the archives, the aquatic center, the ladder truck? And I don't know if I'm missing anything, but do you have that number off the top of your head? And I know if you don't, but...
Danette?
Chief Executive Vincent, Commissioner Prudential. If you look at the resource requirement schedule that you have there, there's separate line items. The one, if you look at the top box, it says GEO bonds refunding debt service, 16.77 mills. And if you go further on down, it talks about the appropriations related to it. Are you asking the total debt outstanding or just how much are we levying this year for the debt?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I guess I'm wondering, all of the debt service that we have to pay for all those different things collectively? Thank you.
Chief Executive Vincent, Commissioner Prudential, on an annual basis, the debt service? So we would have to just sit there and add up the GEO debt, the 1.057 million for the GEO refunding, which that relates to the civic center renovation that was done several years ago, and then the law enforcement, admin building, and detention center. The next thing we'd have to add up is the archives debt service towards the bottom, the $571,200. So we're at like 1.5 million. And then you have the ladder truck above the GEO bonding debt service of 103, so 1.6. And another 5 million, so 2.1 million in general obligation debt, roughly. Outstanding GEO debt, when we did the bond calculations related to showing that we have enough capacity to service the debt that we have. We have $34 million in general obligation debt outstanding. We had another 25 million available.
Follow-up?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Danette, how many, because we have so many mills that we're working with, what is the balance of mills that we have left available and to Butte Silver Bow government and to the folks if, say, we want to do something else within the county?
Chief Executive Vincent, Commissioner Prudential. There's roughly about 45 to 50 mills left. I've done the calculation. It's rough right now. I'll get the final number to you on next Wednesday night. Calculating at 49.23 mills.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, could you explain on the summary of amendments, the TIFID number 2 transferred to Fire Department? Could you explain that to me?
Chief Executive Vincent, Commissioner Henderson. That relates to the 18-mill contract that has been entered into with the TIFID and the Fire Department for the Fire Equipment Fund. But how this works is that it's based on 18 mills of the total certified value of that district, and then the TIFID allocates the funding over to the Fire Department, because the TIFID district is outside of the Fire District, so they don't pay the 50-plus mills related to the fire services. So this is their contribution back in to purchase equipment in case they ever were to be called out to that area. This is strictly based on the value. The number that we originally put on the budget was similar to the amount of value that they had last year. Those businesses out there have a lot of tax base related to their economics, so we don't know exactly all of the final dollars to get those certified numbers. And on Monday, when we got the certified number, the TIFID value had dropped. And so we had to make that corresponding change so that we weren't over allocating funds, over allocating more than 18 mills.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. Thanks, Danette. Does anyone that wants to comment, given it's a public hearing on the budget, you see here? Proponents or opponents? It's open. Thank you for the clarification. Hold it around 20. 2681 Grand Avenue. And if anyone else wants to make any public comment at this, or to bother to come before you to make public comment at the last public hearing on this, I ask that you please correct me if I am wrong. I must object to this budget not containing, other than the SIBRAC program, an allocation of funds to encourage and support motorhead SIDs. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bellwobb. Any other proponents or opponents to the budget this evening, or items within the budget? Okay. Seeing none, we'll continue to hold this open until next Wednesday, when we have the special meeting to close the public hearing. Communication 16-352, Julia Crane, Superfund Program Data Administrator, requesting council commissioners authorize time this evening, it was actually last week, but we moved it to this week, to present the outcome of the 2016 Superfund Advisory and Redevelopment Trust Authority Grant Cycle. With Julie this evening is Chairman of the SADA Board, Mr. Bill Joyce. I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, Chairman Shaw, members of council. As the chief executive said, my name is Bill Joyce, and I am the chairman of the Superfund Advisory Redevelopment Trust Authority, SADA as it is known. And as you also know, I'm one of 11 voting members that has been tasked with making funding decisions concerning funds that were provided in accordance with the allocation agreement between Butte Silver Bow and Arco. And I just wanted to come forward here tonight and let you folks know that our members have worked very diligently during the 18 months that we've been working. For most of those months, we've met twice a month. We vigorously evaluated 47, 41, excuse me, separate grant proposals. We spent a great deal of time and effort in establishing some detailed criteria that aid us in our evaluation of those proposals. In June of this year, we were able to make final funding decisions for 21 projects, which we believe will have a lasting effect and benefit for the citizens of Butte and allow Butte to grow and to provide a great quality of life. Today, Julia Crane has prepared a presentation for you, and after that presentation, both Ms. Crane and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Chief Executive Vincent, Chairman Shaw, members of the commission. My name is Julia Crane. I work in the Superfund Program here at Butte Silver Bow. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Superfund Advisory and Redevelopment Trust Authority to update you on the 2016 grant cycle and the outcome of that process. All right. We have 11 member board, voting board with at-large members, board appointees, and ex officio members. Our at-large members are Bill Joyce, Neil Britton, Stella Caposia, Megan Hussain, Wendy Grace, Mark Medley, Emily Mender, and the forgotten but not forgotten, Tom Haylock, who did not make the list up here, I apologize. And board appointees, Rick LaBush, who sits on the SADA for the planning board, Danette Melvin, who sits at the request of the Board of Health, and Missy Resilien on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission. We also have four ex officio members, Chief Executive Vincent, County Attorney Irene Joyce, Commissioner Dennis Henderson, and Cord Harris, who is representative of the Atlantic Richfield Company. As you may know, or be familiar with, the SADA was established by ordinance in 2014. Since that time, they have met twice monthly, in a very rigorous schedule, working to understand the ins and outs and complexities of the Superfund Program as it relates to the city of Butte, but also to come together as a board to direct plans and programs that will lead to the redevelopment of mining impacted lands within Silver Bow County, and to advise this government on the decision-making related to Superfund matters, specifically improvement, redevelopment, and reuse of mining or environmentally impacted lands located here in our community. The objectives themselves are achieved through the development of an end of funding plan for grant allocations. And the Redevelopment Trust Funds consist of these dollars, which have been set aside by the Atlantic Richfield Company to the benefit of the citizens and residents of Butte Silver Bow in recognition of the development challenges present due to historic mining and the waste and placement selected. There are seven types of projects that these funds can be used for. We talk about these as program areas. We utilize these funds to defer costs of development in mining impacted areas. Examples of these projects are the removal of mining impacted soils, very familiar in the area of the Belmont Senior Citizen Center and the Community Counseling and Correctional Services facilities several years ago. Preservation of historic mining, smelting and mineralid infrastructure. Operation and maintenance of the parks and open spaces located on mining impacted lands, for example, Copper Mountain Park. Health initiatives, the program that is currently running is the Woodstove Change Out Program, which is being implemented in the Grua Neighborhood. Our wonderful and so beloved festivals. Civil Lake Robber Infrastructure System. And finally, a program serving the community and economic development program. So the grant development process has been something that has been quite fascinating for me to witness over the course of the last 18 months. This is a program that is completely unique to the community of Butte and offers an opportunity that is incomparable to anything that we would see in any other community like it in the United States, I believe. There is a strength here where we are allocating resources to things that really do bring us together as a community, which is something that is really resoundingly positive. This grant program has been built by scratch by our volunteer board. They have gone through a wonderful process to... They have gone through a wonderful process to establish eligibility criteria, asking that these monies be dedicated to residents of our community and that the money be spent in Butte, particularly in the Bipsy of mining impacted lands. Moving from that, developing an evaluation criteria that allowed them to evaluate applications with some rigor, to make sure that they were meeting the leaders of the allocation agreement, which allowed this money to be given to our community, but also to say that we are redeveloping our lands to promote redevelopment and long-term growth for our community. We also did four different grant writing assistance sessions at the Archives, letting personal assistants to members of the community who may not be familiar with grant writing, to allow an open and expensive process that would make sure that people who don't do this every day were able to apply and to become eligible for the program. And they went through an enormous amount of work, reading forty-one twenty-plus-page applications, deliberating the merits of each of those, and then sitting through and inviting the public to provide public presentations on their final selections. Next. So overall, forty-one applications were submitted. They range, really focused on historic preservation and community economic development projects. A total of 1.5 million dollars in requests were made in the original funding RFP process. Of those, twenty-one exemplary projects were selected for funding, ultimately resulting in six hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars in grant awards, with three hundred and one thousand dollars for the community and economic development projects, one hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars to historic preservation, ninety thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars to mining and neighborhood redevelopment, and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to our local festivals. These applicants brought an astounding nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to the table in in-kind match and hard cash match to these grant applications, which allows the 2016 SADA grant cycle to have a total economic and community benefit impact for this community at 1.6 million dollars in overall investment. I'd like to go on and give just a couple of quick examples to you about two of the projects that I think have really exemplified what we're hoping to accomplish through this project. One is the Woburns End of Mining, Woburn Stope Development Project. Their application, a request for seventeen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars will result in the development and rehabilitation of the existing underground mine tour facilities located within the Orphan Red Mine of the Woburns End of Mining. What this will make possible is, right now, tours typically can go to the sixty-five-foot level. This will allow tourists and visitors alike to go down to the hundred-foot level and see what it actually looked like for mines to operate in Butte. This is a pretty cool thing. It's kind of nice to be able to go into the ground and see what your grandparents did when they were young. So I'm very proud of this one. This is from Stope Development and the station rehabilitation for that project. And then secondly, we have a project that we installed very soon, actually, on the BNP Trail, which is interpreter's signage for the St. Mary's Neighborhoods that were lost during mining operations in Butte Hill. And that will be implemented very soon. And it will essentially allow for the installation of approximately seven signs to be interpreting the history of the neighborhoods where my family grew up, but I never got to see. So it's kind of an awesome thing as well. We have programs that will be placing roofs on historic buildings. We have brick rehab taking place, the preservation of historic photographs, marketing for the redevelopment and the reimagination of our community, among fifteen others. And I'm just really proud to share this with you tonight, and we're welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Julia. Thank you, Bill. Members of council, any questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Julia. I think you've done a great job. You know, I was at a few of the early meetings. One of the questions I have is, I think at the first meeting when I was there, there was talk about spending like two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollars of this fund. And then the letter we received, it says there was twenty projects for five hundred and seventy-two, three twenty-five, and then in the hand that we got, it says there was six hundred and forty-seven, three twenty-five, with twenty-one projects. So I'm wondering, what made you kind of double the amount of money you decided to spend from the beginning to the end? I mean, I thought, I don't know what the interest was on that fifteen million dollars, but was it the project to kind of spend the interest off of it?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Fisher. During the early stages, we endeavored to give ourselves a budget, and we had hoped that we were going to be able to essentially maintain the fund and just spend the interest. That was our goal. But the interest wasn't as much as we would have liked, and the interest in the funds and the grant applications that we had, which when we made that estimation, we didn't know, turned out to be greater. And so when we finally got all of the projects that we got, which were forty-one projects, and that would, those would be forty-one projects that were just in the two programs that the board has complete authority over, that Program Two, which is Historic Preservation, and the Program Seven, which is the Community Development. When we saw that there was enough interest in there, and when we went through and ranked all of the various programs, we still tried to make a cutoff where we could keep it within the interest, but the board as a whole determined that the projects that we chose to fund were worthwhile, and so we decided to spend more money. And given that we haven't spent money out of these particular funds in the last two or three years before the authority was established as a board, we felt that the projects were worthwhile. And so we went over what we had hoped that we could keep in. Hope that answers your question.
Follow up, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate that. And then when we went from twenty projects to twenty-one, and from five seventy-two to six forty-seven, which is another, the letter dated July fifteenth to July twenty-seventh, and then the handout we got today, that's about seventy thousand. Was that divided amongst the twenty or twenty-one projects? Or was that just one or two projects that were added to the agenda, I guess?
No, that would be accounting error on my part. I apologize, Commissioner Fisher. The twenty-one programs that have been funded with 2016 can be found on this spreadsheet that I handed out to you earlier. And there is a list there of the allocations. And so the accurate number, which has been provided as our final budget, is the six hundred and four hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay, Commissioner, oh, follow up?
Thank you. I appreciate the answers. And could you tell me what the interest was at this time on the fifty million dollars?
I think I'd have to defer to...
Hi, Mr. Budget Director, Lee Sin.
Chief Executive Vincent, Commissioner Fisher. They started investing in the long-term investment pool probably by the end of January. And it's not like you just can dump fifteen million in. And so, and reinvested about thirteen-something. We left some in the short-term investment pool for a different activity in case some big project came along as well, so that their hands weren't tied. Because you start playing some of those long-term investments that we invested in, you run the risk of losing the market value on it. And so, but to date, they've earned, just in that six-month period, being able to participate in the long-term investment pool at the state of Montana, it's around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. But earning about three percent interest on it, which is much better than what I can do here locally. I'm restricted on the funds that I can invest in.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Julia.
Okay, Commissioner Rasha, followed by Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Bill and Julia. This is a great list. I appreciate that. Since this is our first round, our first grant cycle, I thought maybe for the record and for our listeners on the radio, or probably our Montana Standard readers. So at this point, is there oversight to make sure the projects are completed? Is this simply a match kind of a situation? Is this money-handed? And I just, if you wouldn't mind, just give us a little thumbnail on that, please.
Chief Executive Vincent, Chairman Shaw. We are putting each of the applicants and the grantees under an individual contract. This is a reimbursement basis program. So for every dollar expended by a grantee, they will have to provide an invoice, and then we will receive that invoice, review the expenditure, and then make a reimbursement payment from the Redevelopment Trust Fund. We'll be working with them on a quarterly basis to accept progress reports, and they will report back to our wonderful SADA Board on the progress of their projects to ensure that they're being completed at a timely manner.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Julia, in regards to the festival economy grants that they receive, was there a consideration about using this funding for prolonging the festivals rather than just use the money this year and not have it next year, or have any type of equipment to utilize in the future?
I could handle that.
The festival funding is, in the allocation agreement, is actually earmarked funds. So fifty thousand dollars is earmarked towards the Folk Festival. Twenty-five thousand is earmarked towards the Eagle Canoe Days. And then there was twenty-five thousand that was specifically earmarked for other festivals. So those set the parameters in which we could operate. We could, if we wanted to, we could expand additional funds, but we were kind of compelled by the allocation agreement to make those allocations. And so those were the allocations that were made. The other fund, the twenty-five thousand dollars in the other fund, twenty-five went to the On the Raw Festival, and we also allocated twelve thousand five hundred to a new festival, the Coda Ride International Film Festival. So that's how that went down.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, thanks you guys. I know how hard you worked. There was a lot of hours done, I know that. And at least Mr. Sessor didn't buy any food that he was supposed to buy either. But anyway, I'd like to call on Mr. Sessor for one second, if I may, Mr. Chief Executive, to explain, I think it was Jim's question, on the interest amount. There was a certain amount held that John could explain that was building up faster than the three percent that was withheld. And I would like John to explain that.
Mr. Sessor, Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, Commissioner Henderson, we started the year with fourteen million dollars. We, the board, I should say, made a decision to invest twelve point five million into the long-term bond pool at the Board of Investments. The presentations that were made by the operators of that fund indicated that we would average approximately three percent on that money over time, provided that we weren't anxious in taking it out. So that would generate approximately four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in interest on an annual basis. But as was pointed out by Budget Director, we didn't get that in the first fiscal year. So we're getting one on that. We got a hundred and seventy back. We held approximately 1.5 million into short-term pool accounts to cover fiscal year fifteen, sixteen investments. And now the investments that were outlined today, we're not going to have to dive into the long-term bond pool because we anticipated spending in that five hundred to six hundred thousand-dollar range for each of these two fiscal years. And that's what was held in our short-term pool. So that's about the size of it. We hope to average at least three percent. You know how that goes. But when we, before, the board decided to make that investment in the long-term pool, we had been given pretty good information from the Board of Investments. They had been averaging much more than that in previous decades, and certainly some of the other funds that we underrated to make this investment. The fund, for example, that is the long-term pool for the Butte Area One, the Streamside Tidings, those were generating some six and seven percent throughout the 2000 decade. But then after the crash, we rolled eight, spent more in the three percent range. I hope that answers your question.
That was it. Thanks, John.
Commissioner Proudie, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Julia. I just have a quick question, other than what has been earmarked for the festival economy. And with regard to several of the items, it seems several of them are duplicated, and I've seen them in the budget. And what would you say to folks that see some of these things that you're funding as well? And do you think that they just need extra money? And they need more investment, like the miners' field at Copper Mountain and some of these other, the projects that may need additional funding from the advisory, the trust authority, that may question that and may need some additional funds from this authority than just what you do essentially from the PowerPoint with regard to cleanup and what the core mission is with regard to community and economic development and other things?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Proudie, some of the grant applications were actually made on behalf of Butte Silver Bow. So Butte Silver Bow actually had projects in place, most in the miners' field, which had sponsors in addition to Butte Silver Bow, the Legion. And so in those circumstances in which Butte Silver Bow was a grant applicant, we considered those grants in the same fashion that we consider grants from private entities and made funding decisions based upon the merit of the project, whether it was a public project or a private project.
No further questions? Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your work. It is a long and arduous process. Moving into the consent agenda, I'd like to call for any amendments or segregations. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I would like to segregate item number twenty-one in the Communications sixteen dash three seven seven.
Anything further? Commissioner Fisher?
If I could, Mr. Chief Executive, I would like to segregate number three sixteen three five nine and number...
What number was the first one? Number three.
Sixteen dash three five nine.
And number twenty, please. Sixteen dash three seven six.
Okay. Any further? Seeing none, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move for section two, Consent Agenda A one through four, and B one through twenty-one, with the exception of item three sixteen dash three five nine, item twenty sixteen dash three seven six, and item twenty-one sixteen dash three seven seven.
Can I add one more to that?
Certainly.
Before I second that motion, I'd like to segregate number eighteen, Communication sixteen dash three seven four.
Item eighteen, sixteen dash three... What was the number, John?
Seven four.
Three seven four. Okay.
Okay, so let the amended motion reflect the addition of Communication sixteen dash three seven four.
Did you second that, John?
Seconded.
Seconded. Nothing further on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. So we'll take them in order. Number three sixteen dash three five nine, Jason Killam, Accounting Associate Manager, Butte Silver Bow Extension Office, advising council of commissioners regarding estimated county leave liability for fiscal year 2016. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. The reason I segregated this one is I myself am a little confused about why this is being brought up at this time. Usually, these are things that happen when people are retiring or leaving the system. I'm just curious to why Bozeman, whoever they are over there, are trying, or wanting, you know, to modify us this at this time. Do you have any answers for that, or does anyone have any answers to that?
County Extension Agent Kelly Anderson is in the audience. She will address this.
Chief Executive Vincent, Council Commissioners. Commissioner Fisher, I have, it's been brought to my attention that sometimes the instructions in the letter aren't quite the instructions for a city-county. Each year, I receive this letter for... Each year, I receive this letter for an account of how much annual leave I've accrued. I should have just handed it to Janet Gleason instead of your council secretary, and I apologize for that.
Okay.
What's your recommendation, Jim?
Thank you, Kelly. I appreciate that. With that being said, I would make a recommendation to concur a note in place on file sixteen dash three five nine.
Second.
Can you read the motion in a second to note in place on file? Anything further on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Communication sixteen dash three seven four, Karen Burns, Director of Community Development, requesting council authorize the chief executive to sign a guaranteed maximum price contract amendment for Uptown parking garage. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Oh, Karen. Karen, just had a couple of questions in regards to what Rich was asking about earlier, mostly. I did have some questions regarding the contract, but you answered those for me earlier today, so thank you for doing that. Could you just give Rich a little information on the Northwestern Energy and the use of their parking, which I know with the URA, as well as the free parking on, in Uptown Butte? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Members of council and Commissioner Morgan, thanks for the opportunity to address those questions. So the parking is managed in Uptown Butte by the Parking Commission. And so before we would make any changes to parking on the street or parking that we charge for our permits or parking in the garage, it would come before the Parking Commission. At this time, we have no intention of making any changes to the free parking or the two-hour zone in which that free parking is established in Uptown Butte. To the second question regarding Northwestern Energy employees, the way we structured the agreement with Northwestern, as you remember, is that they are very interested in this parking garage. They are not able to lease or purchase spaces as an entity within the garage because it changes the way that we can bond for this public garage. We work very closely with Northwestern Energy, and I can assure you that they're very interested in buying multiple permits for their employees to park in this garage. They're very excited about it, and I do believe they are actually going to incentivize their employees on their end to park and purchase permits within the garage. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. That answers all of my questions for Rich.
Thank you.
So I will make a motion that we concur and place Communication sixteen dash three seven four on file.
Second.
Can you read the motion in a second on the question? Commissioner Perdul.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Karen, thank you. Would it be then first come, first served? I think you answered that before, but refresh my memory on that with regard to the permits and the folks who are greatly interested in getting them and the cost and that. Thank you.
Mr. Chief Executive, members of council and Commissioner Perdul, it would be a first come, first served sort of situation. This is a completely public garage. Our Parking Commission at our last meeting threw out a very good idea about trying to do a pre-sale, a marketing of the garage, basically, to, you know, get those permit applications in, not application, but those payments in, get those purchased. Right now, I can tell you, we're estimating a monthly permit charge of forty dollars a month. That has not been decided, but that is what we're basing a lot of our estimates on in terms of revenue generation. And that would be in comparison to right now, a permit holder in one of our surface lots pays thirty dollars a month. So it would be just a slight, slightly more. That has not been determined yet, though.
On the question, Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. Just so the public is aware of this, there will also be, as, I know in our parking lots that Butte Silver Bow owns the permit ones like High Across the Street, you have to have a permit to park there, but you will not, just for clarification, you will not have to have a permit to park in the garage once it's built. You will be able to get a space at any time, so to speak. Is that correct, or?
Mr. Chief Executive and members of council, Commissioner Anderson, that could be true. If for some reason we were to sell out the entire garage, I don't believe that's how, we're not going to manage the garage that way. I can tell you that upfront. We do want to have public spaces available. So we haven't determined yet the ratio. We need to kind of take the temperature of how much demand there is. I've often said it, and I'll say it again, if this garage is full the day we open it and there's no spaces available, then we've been a success. We've moved people who would otherwise be parking on the street in the three zones and shuffling their cars into long-term parking within a garage that allows free-up of spaces for commerce. So to answer your question, I don't have a definitive answer of how many spaces would be available for public parking. In my mind, there will always be spaces available in the garage for someone to drive up and drive into.
Thank you.
Nothing further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Communication thirteen dash three seven six, Chief Executive requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to join with the Montana League of Cities and Towns in an intervention in Upper Missouri Waterkeeper versus the U.S. EPA legal case. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Reason for segregation of this was because I read the letter, and then I read through some of the legal mumbo jumbo, and it's rather confusing. And in the past few weeks, there has been talk in town of an attorney by the name listed, and the attorney's hired, and it seemed to be kind of a secret, and some of the people have called and asked me to try to find out a little bit more about this endeavor. And I know our part is only twenty-eight hundred dollars, so I'm not too concerned about that, but if we could just get a little enlightenment on what's going on, I would appreciate it.
Okay. You know, I can answer some general questions here. This is a pretty well-respected firm. I did, regrettably, our county attorney isn't here tonight, and she's, her daughter's getting married this week, so she's been preparing as she should for that. I don't know if she's had a chance to discuss this with Molly at all, but she's obviously in favor of moving ahead with this. These folks are fairly experienced on these sort of, these sort of issues, and under the united front of the Class One cities with the Montana League of Cities and Towns and the possibility of others joining on board, it is a good way for us to go forward with challenging some, some pretty controversial regulation as it relates to our future regulatory requirements, which gives us better certainty relative to what we're look, what we'll be looking at in our sewage treatment plant down the road, our nutrient standards, as well as kind of shielding not just Butte folks, but folks all around the state of Montana to some, some very significant additional economic impacts relative to these requirements that will kind of put a lot of onus on municipalities to meet standards which have been proven beyond more than a shadow of a doubt to be unattainable in most situations. And so that's kind of the premise behind it. I got, you know, Matt Moore who is here tonight, who's, who's our resident expert on the nitty-gritty as it relates to these standards, so he might be able to shed a little more light on, on the subject. But I don't know if I'm, if we're heading in the right direction on answering your question or giving you more info on this.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I guess the concern is, whenever we join a lawsuit with other cities, as you know, many people in Butte Silver Bow feel we always get the short end of the stick, because Butte, in a lot of people's eyes, in Butte feel like we are kind of the black sheep of the family in the larger cities. Not just me saying this, this consensus is some of the local people, and as I stated, I'm just the messenger here. So when we join these lawsuits, I just want to be certain for my constituents and many people in Butte, that we are getting as well-represented at the table as the other five or six cities are getting representation at the table. And sometimes they're making deals where Butte, being in our superfund city and the things we're doing, sometimes we're not getting the best end of the deal because these people, letters are from Helena, Billings, I don't see Butte's name on any of the legal mumbo jumbo there at all. So it is a concern. And I don't know if Matt can add anything or John Sessor can add anything, but as many of you know, many of us had calls, and the name that, you know, we were hiring attorney named Barry's been floating around Butte Silver Bow for three weeks or a month, you know? And I noticed the letter was dated July fifteenth, and the letter earlier that was, earlier than that. So it was just a concern, and I'm not a major concern, but I would just like to know a little more about it, I think.
Okay. Now, Matt, you know, this is different than a lot of other cases where there's actually going to be settlements and that. This is, you know, I don't know if John wants to speak on this at all. He's certainly familiar with the legislation that this Waterkeeper group is, is challenging. It was put forward in, in mind for the benefit of all of our communities, and so this is a united front to challenge this group trying to strike down what I think John and his colleagues up in Helena all agreed was good legislation for the benefit of all of our cities. I, I think your, your concerns are well-stated and well-founded and not necessarily applicable to this case, so I'll, I'll shut up and let Matt or John chime in.
Chief Executive, Commissioner Fisher, the lawsuits against the EPA who created the nutrient limits, the DQ administers those nutrient limits for us, they created a variance process, they created certain limits. The lawsuit is pretty much saying the EPA didn't do good enough, and they want to see more strict limits enforced. It's kind of a form of reference, our new thirty-six million dollars we can invest in our treatment plant gets us to those new limits, current limits we're under, and then maybe the next round of limits we're going to be okay on. This lawsuit might push us into the opportunity of having to invest again immediately to add more, I don't know of technology that could get us there. This is, this is, we are essentially at the technological limit right now for what we can do and what we can afford here in Butte Silver Bow. I don't think any repairs could, could add any more technology to get more, better limits. The other cities, it's, we're all on the same boat in this one. We're not going to get treated any differently. It's our limits. So we'll be represented by the league of cities. There's other agencies who've jumped on board, the National Association of Clean Water Agencies, they're very large organizations that represents, Bozeman, I think, our municipality or our treatment plant will join, so we can get good help from them. And it's just, this is, this is quite egregious, this lawsuit we filed.
Thank you.
John, do you have a need to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't, we emphasize more than what Mr. Moore and you as the chief executive have pointed out. When we worked together to pass Senate Bill three twenty-five last year, sponsored by our Senator Jim Keen, we are, we are getting to a limit in this country, in this state, and in our town on how much money that we can afford to continue to pay to try to, to, to preserve our, our waterways, whether it's stormwater, whether it's effluent, or whether it's groundwater. The, the citizens of, of this city and our state have to, have to be given a break here. I mean, there's just so much money we can spend on clean water to primarily protect fish that, that, that people are, are not being able to afford their medicine, not being able to afford their food, and yet if we let this go unchecked, there will never be a limit that is satisfactory to certain people and certain organizations in our society. When this lawsuit came up, this was a situation where this was a group that wants to basically sue EPA for failure to enforce the law as effectively as they should, where the citizen towns who are joining in on this lawsuit are going broke trying to implement the law that they're already being compelled to follow. So I, I, I just think that this is an important stand to take as citizens. We are all for clean water. We're all conservationists. We all want to do right by our natural resources. There is no question about that. But there is a limit to how much people can pay and how much we're going to be compelled to pay. And for some, that is a limited, a limited, limitless amount. And we've got to, we've got to join in and, and try to, to push back on, on this particular effort. As far as, I just want to make one other point about this alleged retainage between Butte Silver Bow and, I guess what you referred to is the bounty Cal's Act, Barry of Hoben. And I can just assure you and everybody on the committee or on the council that there is no retained counsel by Butte Silver Bow. We have not retained Leo Berry. Leo Berry sits in on various of our consent decree negotiations, representing the grand roads. They're in the same room with us, but there's no relationship whatsoever between Butte Silver Bow and that firm. So I just want to clear that up for the record. I've heard that myself over the last couple of weeks, and it's just completely false.
I guess I didn't even get that reference in there, but yeah, I would encourage you to call Mr. Berry himself. We have no relationship on, as a relation.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, John. That was great clarification. I think that opens lines of communication a lot of people are looking for. I think those kind of things eliminate a lot of the things that get kicked around that are false. And with that being said, I would make a recommendation that we concur and place on file Communication sixteen dash three seven six. Thank you.
Can you read the motion in a second on the question? If it's so suits everybody, there is a conference call scheduled this coming Tuesday at one thirty with the League of Cities and Towns and Browning and Cal's Act to discuss this, this legal suit. I know that Mr. Moore and Mr. Schultz will probably be dialing in to weigh in on it, so if you're interested in that, let me know. You can take part, listen in. Nothing further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, we have Communication sixteen dash three seven seven, Chief Executive requesting Council of Commissioners allow for ongoing discussion regarding efforts to relocate the city county shops as a result of the state of Montana's pending removal of the parrot tailings beneath. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This is going to be held in the committee hall until we decide we've vetted this enough and come to some conclusions, but I would just defer to the chief executive to give us an update.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. I guess in the interest of ongoing discussion, I'll try and give updates on what updates we have. I, I trust you've all been following the comments coming from citizens since we set up the webpage on this. We've got twenty-three comments from citizens so far, some of which have spoken in these, these chambers, a lot who have not, and so obviously, we're paying attention to those. We, we have hard copies of those comments. If for some reason you want to read them in that fashion, just let us know, and we can make comments to them. I would draw folks' attention, we have talked about taking some field-throughs to some of the sites that are, that are out there, being considered. We have not scheduled that yet. I think that might have something to do with the fact that we are looking at further pairing down sites, further evaluating some of the, the new sites that have come forward. We'll have some more discussion on this at the committee of the whole meeting next Wednesday, but also on next Tuesday, August ninth, at the Superfund Advisory and Redevelopment Trust Authority meeting. That's six o'clock at the Emergency Operations Center. We have put this discussion on the SARTA's agenda, and so the shops discussion will be presented and discussed with our members of the Superfund Advisory and Redevelopment Trust Authority in their Superfund Advisory capacity next Tuesday, August ninth at six o'clock. Just wanted to kind of touch on, on a little bit of the more detailed progress that we're looking at here. I mean, obviously, we've discussed with NRD the additional time, which...
I mean, obviously, we've discussed with NRD the additional time, which we're okay there on moving ahead on this. They've agreed to take a look at approving some additional funds for us to do further evaluation of the existing sites. Whereas this isn't going to be a do-over, so to speak, we are open to taking a little closer look at some of the existing sites as well as some additional sites, which at this point, we had one of those comments come from Frank Joseph down at the legal firm as you make the turn from South Montana to Beef Trail Road. That's a site that's been authored up for interest. Again, we're looking ahead on it. It seems pretty small and it's got some floodplain issues, but we haven't outright ruled it out at this point. We were contacted by Bill Hollow of Hollow Contracting. If you know where his operation is right now, it's right across the street to south from the Montana pole plant. He owns property that goes from there all the way south to Beef Trail Road, and so we're trying to get a little better idea of what percentage or portion of that site may or may not make sense for some additional consideration for a shop site. And then we also got contacted by a gentleman representing the Copper Peaks subdivision property, that's that area over there in between the YMCA and Roy Road, and so those are some of the additional ones. Furthermore, we're continuing to evaluate and analyze the north side of Civic Center Road, the Saluso property on Centennial, the Burlington Northern property, the Montana Resources property, and the MLC Mansfield property. And we'll have three reports next week, both at the SARTA meeting on Tuesday, August 9th at 6 o'clock, as well as the Committee of the Whole Meeting next Wednesday. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Shaw.
I will just refer this to the committee hall as recommended. I will keep it open for comment.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Nothing on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion case. Moving into Section 3, Ordinances and Resolutions, referred to judiciary, please take note. Resolution 1635. Moving into Section 4, Ordinances and Resolutions for Final Reading. Number one, Clerk, can you please read the title?
Counsel Resolution Number 1630, Resolution Relating to Financing of Certain Projects, Establishing Compliance with Reimbursement Bond Regulations Under the Internal Revenue Code.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Counsel Resolution 16-30 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Is there anything on the question? Scene one, please cast your votes, it's a roll call. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten yea and zero nay.
Okay, resolution passes. Number two, can you please read it?
Counsel Resolution Number 16-33, Resolution Authorizing Beissurance and Sale of $8,080,000 Principal Amount of Tax Increment Urban Renewal Revenue Bond Series 2016, Butte Uptown Urban Renewal District, to Finance the Parking Garage Project and Prescribing the Form and Terms thereof and the Security Therefore.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
I move to place Counsel Resolution 16-33 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there anything on the question? Scene one, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Eight yea and two nay.
All right, resolution passes. Number three, Clerk, can you please read?
Counsel Resolution Number 1634, Resolution Vacating, Closing, Discontinuing, and Abandoning That Unimproved Portion of Utah Avenue Adjacent to Lots 4, 5, 8, 9, 12, 13, and 18 in Block 1, and Lots 1, 6, 7, 10, 11, 14, and 15 in Block 2, and Lots 1 and 8 in Block 3, and Lots 4 and 5 in Block 4 of the suburban tracks, and Further Vacating, Closing, Discontinuing, and Abandoning The Unimproved Portion of Avon Street Adjacent to Lots 15 through 18 in Block 1, and Lots 15 through 18 in Block 2, and Lots 1 through 4 in Block 3, and Lots 1 through 4 in Block 4 of the suburban tracks, all such property depicted on Platte 391-B, Blocks 1 through 4, and Section 31 Township 3, Range 7 West, to the City and County of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, prescribing the effective date of this resolution and finding the necessary facts herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
I move to place Counsel Resolution Number 16-34 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Seeing nothing on the question, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten yea and zero nay.
Okay, resolution passes. Is there any public comment on matters that were not on this evening's agenda?
Hi, everybody. 362 East Carolina Street. I'll keep this short. It's come to my attention last week that my neighbor to the rest was building a large structure on his property. And the reason, the way I found out about it was when he started moving the date and building the foundation, or getting ready to build a foundation. My inquiries into this, this guy is, one of those people is not a good neighbor. I hesitate to call him a neighbor. This guy is nothing but trouble for me. And as I understand, to a lot of other people too, but that's kind of beside the point. My inquiries into this thing indicate to me that, most of all, it's not in the process that I would be consulted or told about this project coming in. And I just want to, I'm phrasing this in the form of a complaint, but I don't think that that is, if that is the way it is, that basically I have, as an adjacent landlord, I don't have any rights as far as being notified in advance of this coming through. It's a pretty big project, it looks like it's about 35 by 45 feet, and it's going to grow up maybe two stories. They just keep referring to it as a big garage. And I really have no knowledge of exactly what it is. I just have visions of this thing casting a shadow all over my nice yard. And again, you know, a person has a right to build on their property, but I think that it's not right that adjacent landlord has no notification and no way of laying in one or another. Now, a good neighbor might have just come over and asked me and told me I'm going to do this. You know, how do you feel about it, or you know, can you move your fence if you need to, or something like that? Of course, this guy never did any of that. I understand, even if it was in a historic district, that unless it was a demolition, it'd be input from the Historic Preservation Commission, from the preservation officer on this. But whether or not it's within the district, I just think it's a little unfair that something like this could happen with all the notifications of the people that live around it. And I wanted to bring to public attention and just sort of raise my ire about it, and that maybe we figured, hopefully I wouldn't know about this if there was something else to learn, but I guess that's about it. Thank you.
What was the address again, Mr. McGregor?
My address is 362. I think theirs is 358, something like that, because I'm really, my place is three lots, I think, so it's really, as the address is built, it wouldn't be the next address, it would be a few numbers down. I'm not exactly sure what it is. It has me as an ally, it has the property. Part of the process of them, I did find out that they had to change the zoning to build this garage because even though the property was adjacent to the houses there, it wasn't on the same deed, it was a separate piece. So they had to join the team in order to make the garage coagulable, you know, it has to, the garage has to be associated with a house, with a home. It couldn't just build a garage by itself on its own piece of property. So they went through all this process, and again, through all of that, I never heard anything about it. And as all indications are, that's just the way it is right now. And I don't think it's right. I would expect if I did something like that on my property, my neighbors would want to know about it. Who should have the right to know about it?
Thank you.
Mr. Chief Executive, is that a number, but not a street address from where you were at, the streets?
It's East Carolina.
East Carolina.
Oh, East Carolina, thank you.
Okay.
That little stretch, it's only two blocks long. It picks up there and when it ends again down by the new brewery.
Okay.
That's where my wife has her house.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Moving on, is there any other public comment on items not on the agenda this evening?
Commissioner, Chief Executive, again, my name is Richmond Howland, delivered at 281st Court Street here in Butte. I'd like to first say this isn't quite right, but I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Moore for getting these questions asked, although there are no specific real answers. But what I'd like to say is, on the Park Street plan, the Park Street plan about changing Park Street from four lanes or two lanes, I remember coming to a meeting back in, I don't know, February, I can't remember, many, many months ago, and the planning department stated that there will be multiple public opportunities to talk about this, to have forums about this, and that we are going to have these forums, and there has been, as far as I know, since then, a total of zero on this, unless someone can stand and correct me on that. As you probably realize by now, I try and keep myself informed about stuff that goes on here in Butte. I come here and speak about it, but in the last, in the public forums that they had back in, can't remember the end of last year at some point, I thought I was out of town at that time, but I realized I wasn't. And so there needs to be more public forums on this. Just don't let this thing slip by. Please get the planning department to do what they said and have some public forums. Let's do it. Four lanes or two lanes. Obviously, you realize that I'm probably not in favor of that, and I would like some public forums so some people can actually make some comments, besides having those quick little meetings of whatever group or company paid to have those little meetings back at the end of last year to come out with the conclusion that they wanted to come out with. Please open some public forums up so some more people can give their input on Park Street before it just keeps going on and no one really knew about it in the first place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No further public comment? Can I turn your attention to the calendar of other meetings and events? I would note that I errantly said that the 75th anniversary event at 4:00 p.m. next Tuesday, it's actually on Wednesday, Wednesday the 10th at 4:00 p.m. at the gazebo at the Silver Bow Homes. It's on the east side, yep. Okay, motion adjourned.
I move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving adjourned.